I'd like to bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify to that the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motions convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Very none, Ms. Serza?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Ms. Serza, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Moving on to item 3.2, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Very none, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 4.1, announcements in superintendent's report, Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to begin my report by welcoming our new Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Daniel Kiefer. Mr. Kiefer joins the school division with twenty-five years of experience working as a classroom teacher, principal, and central office administrator. Most recently, he served as Executive Director of High Schools for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, overseeing sixteen schools and over twenty thousand students. In his role as Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Kiefer will work closely with the school board on policy and legislative matters. He will also oversee departments that provide efficient operations across the division, including human resources, operations, technology, and student services. I'm excited to have Mr. Kiefer join us. We look forward to working together to support our schools and the school board. Welcome, Mr. Kiefer.
Thank you.
We are just one week away from the first day of school. Although this school year will be much different than any other, there are some constants. For example, schools are holding open house events this week. They will be virtual, of course, but they are still an opportunity for students and parents to touch base with teachers and administrators. High school open house events just wrapped up at six P. M. tonight. Middle school virtual open houses are scheduled for tomorrow, and elementary families will go online Thursday for their open houses. Schools are using video, StudentView, Microsoft Teams, and other platforms to connect with students. Here is a sample video created by two of our elementary principals, Dr. Amy Stam from Jay Blatton Elementary and Melissa White from Stonehouse Elementary.
Hi there. I am Amy Stam, proud principal of Blatton Elementary.
And I am Melissa White, proud principal at Stonehouse Elementary. Go C-Sars!
We are so excited to welcome you to the new school year. We can't wait to see your faces, whether it's in our building or on the computer screen. Speaking of faces, when you see us, you will now see us like this when you come to the building. Safety first. This is what we look like with our masks on. Normally, you would see me outside greeting you as you come to school each day and saying goodbye as you leave each day. Instead, you'll see us popping in on your morning meetings and your closing activities each day. Typically, you would see us coming in and out of your classroom, checking on how you're learning and what you're learning. Instead, we're gonna be popping in and out of your virtual classrooms to see the fun and creative things that you're doing with your teachers every single day. Although we will be learning remotely in the virtual world, we will always stay connected. We can't wait to see you in the new school year.
And finally, tonight, a few technology updates. First, I want to recognize and thank the Department of Technology Staff led by Mr. Landers. They have organized laptop pickups for Virtual Academy students last week and secondary students this week. As of this morning, over five thousand devices have been distributed. Families on social media have described the pickup process as extraordinary, organized, and efficient. One person went so far as to say that Chick-fil-A, a company known for customer service, has nothing on us. This is truly a team effort with technology operations and many volunteers across the division. A complete schedule for device distribution went out to families last week. It is also posted on our website. And speaking of the website, more than eighteen hundred people have visited our website to view last week's Parent Academy session on campus. Approximately seven hundred attended the session live. As a side note, we are renaming Parent Academy to the Family Academy to more accurately reflect that families come in many forms. The next Family Academy takes place September thirtieth. It will focus on tips and strategies for families to help support their child's remote learning experience and provide answers to frequently asked questions. Those are all of the announcements this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I would just like to note that our community lost a fierce education advocate just last week, Lois Hornsby, who one of our middle schools has been named after, passed away. Emily is here, but just wanted to let the community know. She supported us, advocated for us, and beloved our schools. Were there any additional announcements or Okay. We're moving on to item 5.1, citizens' comments. These have been prerecorded. People called in, and so I will turn to that now, and we will listen to those comments.
My name is Liz Friedrich. I'm a high school student in the WJCC area, and I'm a member of the Racial Equity Student Alliance. I recognize that I have typically been concerned by my ability to speak out, but tragic examples of police brutality demand the national recognition of the burning movement to stand up against social injustice. And therefore, I strive to be more educated about the racism that is ingrained in every aspect of our society. I speak to make change myself, and I often speak to make change at a greater scale. And I feel that many of my students, my fellow students, can agree on this. This is why we come before you today. We want safe space to celebrate individualism, to have a, to provide a different and useful outlook on the criticism and political noise of the outside world that allows and allow us to think of promptly current events, current events that scare us. This is the death of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and other Black Americans killed by this police. And this reason that we come before you today is to demand your cooperation in equity.
My name is Ruby Ostrahead, and I am a high schooler within the WJCC district. I am with the Racial Equity Student Alliance. Racism has harmed groups of color for generations, decades, and centuries. Schools should be a safe haven for any form of prejudice, but we need to grow and learn. We have had the honor to speak with superintendent about how to reform our school system. We ask that each school have a place where discrimination can be reported anonymously, or the disappearance from our current bullying system. We ask that the consequences for racist words, stereotypes, and acts be severe to all students and faculty. We ask that all opportunities for higher classes are offered to all, no matter the race. We ask that African-American experience in America be represented without white bias within current teaching courses. We ask that each school have an annual multi-day assembly that allows for racism to be spoken about openly. We ask that you-
Hello, my name is Talita Houghton. I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance. It has been one hundred and fifty-six years since slavery was abolished and fifty-two years since Jim Crow segregation laws were repealed. However, it was just within the last year that racist and harmful comments were made at our schools. Schools should be a safe place with the purpose of educating children, yet a basic understanding of how these negative comments and thoughts regarding those of other races have been neglected. I believe it is vital for the future generations' education to include a deeper and more meaningful endeavor to teach the youth of today about our country's history, and not to allow these comments to go unnoticed and without consequence. Our schools should be inclusive to all children, no matter their race. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Tensha Barito. I'm a senior at Royal High School. I'm with the Racial-
I've been in Williamsburg, James City County, here beginning of my education. As I enter my final year of high school, I find it to be my obligation to speak out against our current state of our school system and its role in perpetuating racial inequality. Although I reap the benefits of being a white student in a school system, I do not remain blind to the racism that still lingers in our hallways. I have been, recently become involved in the Racial Equity Student Alliance. Our goal is to learn to eradicate racial inequality in our schools, but cultivate community awareness. Since my peers and I have had the opportunity to speak with the students about methods that will ensure racial equity throughout WJCC, I urge the school board to take action to create racial, real, sustainable change in equality and safety in our schools. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jared Nidama. I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance. I go to Jamestown High School. It has been a very serious issue plaguing our schools for the past several decades. As much as we like to act like racial discrimination, especially towards African-Americans, everything of the past, when Martin Luther King Jr. had his march on Washington almost sixty years ago, that is not the case. Past few months have shown that institutional racism that America has and will continue to foster unless any serious changes made. While national changes like that may not be in our hands, we can at least take the steps to make such changes to our local area of WJCC districts. We ask for real changes to happen in our schools, to teach the plight that African-Americans have gone through for the past two centuries, and remove the white-centric mindset that is blinding students with political harassment issues that we currently have in our nation. Issues in equity have been serious problems with WJCC schools for generations. And while we can't speak or take responsibility for the actions of those of the past, we are more than able to take that responsibility now and pave the way for further generations and allow them the best future we can provide. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Ronnie Armstrong. I am with the Racial Equity Student Alliance, and I attend Jamestown High School. I am calling to demand equality for African-American students a part of the WJCC school division. These demands include giving African-American students a place to anonymously report racism, strengthen the consequences for racism in schools, an African-American history elective, an annual multi-day assembly, accountability for parenting, more well-rounded history classes, and equal opportunities in terms of courses for African-American students. I have been a part of the WJCC's kindergarten, so I know that WJCC is always striving to be better. I believe that the WJCC school division will take the steps to grant African-American students an equal and safe environment to learn in. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Sam Pryser. I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance. I go to Jamestown High School. In the wake of events across the nation regarding issues of racial equity, my eyes are turned to how our community handles these real-world problems on a local scale, particularly within the WJCC school system. Based on hearing testimonials of other students witnessing events in my own personal experience, it has become apparent that the lack of racial equity can be found in our school system. I have come to firmly believe that derogatory racial remarks, widespread ignorance of African-American culture, and weak consequences for racist actions have no part in our school system and within the lives of the students in Williamsburg and James City County. I, along with my fellow students, see the advancement of racial equity within our schools as a priority for all, from the school board to the students. I ask daily that these considerations be properly waived and appreciated when for action comes. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Gladys Smith from Jamestown High School, and I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance, and I'm a student of WJCC. At school, we are taught that racism is rooted in our things of the past. We are assured that all evil systems and ideologies are eradicated. Birds of oppression based solely on skin color have been eradicated. As four children in history class, we are shown that those kinds of hate only exist behind a computer screen, through powerful presentations or remarks with their junior speeches. Everything we see and everything we do not see, and plus, xenophobia belongs to a different universe and is easy to exist in a modern world. As someone lucky enough to not have to experience discrimination in their everyday life, I cannot even begin to imagine the amount of pain and confusion I feel if I was discriminated against on a daily basis while being taught to believe such Eurocentric whitewashed history. That is why I am here today, to embark on a journey that will eventually result in our communities and schools working for and with everyone without any undercurrent disdain towards any racial or ethnic group. It begins with us. Thank you for your time, Gladys Smith.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Shainer, and I go to Jamestown High School, and I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance. For generations of students in WJCC schools, racism and inequality has persisted with little consequence. Young people are molded by their experience in school, and because of this, creating a safe environment for a school provides equal opportunity for all students and remains consistently as a racist imperative for students of color. As we enter the new school year, we want the school board to consider implementing changes that will create a safe and nurturing environment for all students. The Racial Equity Student Alliance was created and helps to prevent future generations of schools, students of color, from enduring harmful school environments that could negatively impact their learning and growth. Thank you for your time.
My name is Amadi Hopkins from Jamestown. I'm with the Racial Equality Student Alliance. Over fifty students have collected to form the Racial Equality Student Alliance with the goal to minimize the racial tensions and inequalities in our communities, especially our school system. Many African-American students have expressed their discontent with the state of the school system and its lack of action to enforce equality. We demand concrete consequences for racist behavior from students of color. These and the lies and racist actions are damaging to the learning environment for students of color in the district. We hope with the consistent and definite action from the school board and school staff, we can begin to make reparations to people of color in our community and make our public schools safe and equal. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Morgan McKnight. I am with the Racial Equity Student Alliance, and I attend Jamestown High School. I'm speaking to you today because I have the privilege of an education that caters to me. As a white person, I read books by authors that look like me, watch films with actors that look like me, and I'm taught about historical figures that look like me, by teachers that look like me. I've never felt validated within the classroom. I've read very few books by authors of color in school, and Black artists mentioned only briefly during the Harlem-
There's an entire history that is never taught. In not learning this history, I have been robbed of multicultural perspective in an evermore global world, but more importantly, students of color have been robbed of an opportunity to feel seen in my classroom and feel pride in their heritage. I am speaking to you because every child, teen, WJCC, and everywhere else deserves to hear a history that belongs to them and consume the art of people that look like them. Thank you. Morgan McKnight.
Hi, my name is India Dogwin, and I go to Jamestown High School, and I'm with the Racial Equality Student Alliance. I am reading the student testimonials. Please note that these are only a few student stories, and there are many more out there. I was in class when a white student took my hairpin out of my pocket and tried to put it through my hair, soon after being told I have N-word now. And then the same student proceeded to put it through my white peer's hair. I didn't say anything because I didn't want to be called a snowflake, high schooler. I have heard multiple white students repeatedly use racial slurs, especially the N-word in common passing. I have attempted to explain to two of these students how using such terminology is not politically correct and is racist. Their responses were similar in kind. I can do and say whatever I want, high schooler. At the Jamestown versus Lafayette football game in 2018, the two student bodies were changing back and forth by each other, and the Jamestown side started shouting, "We have dads," which was used as a way to bring down the African-Americans of that school by using that awful stereotype. Not as teachers, coach, or security guard said anything to gangrene or their leaders.
Hello, my name is Leah Cardano. I live in Williamsburg. I'm a member of the community and a member of the Village Initiative, and I'm calling today to leave a comment in support of the WJCC students who have shared with the school board their testimony about racial discrimination in the schools. And I just want to urge the school board to hear them and to be as clear as possible about the ways in which they're taking action. No one deserves to be treated like that within their own community.
Hello, my name is Jamie Richardson, and I go to Jamestown High School. I am with the Racial Equity Student Alliance. We are a group of fifty-year-old students from the WJCC school district. We are pushing for reform within WJCC schools so that students of color can become a higher priority. Today, I will be reading a testimony from an African-American high schooler who would prefer to stay anonymous. This is one of many testimonies we have gathered. Begin quote, "When I was transferring to JHS as a freshman, my counselor didn't have me sign up for any honors classes or challenging classes, and she also didn't tell me about Concourse Nine or any other academic programs. My mom had to force her to sign me up for honors classes, and we had to hear about Concourse Nine from one of my friend's moms." End quote. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Abby Bass. I am with the Racial Equity Student Alliance, and I go to Jamestown High School. In our school system, there are some fundamental changes that must be made to ensure not only equality but equity for students all races. One of these such changes is a dedicated outlet in each school where students can report racism that they witnessed or experienced. Every student deserves to be in a safe environment where they don't feel threatened or unsafe due to the color of their skin. And this reporting area is crucial to minimize the amount of racism in our schools that may get brushed under the rug. Thank you for your time, Abby Bass.
Hi, my name is Fadden Luna. I go to Jamestown High School. I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance. We are a group of fifty or so students from the WJCC school district. We are pushing for reform within the WJCC schools so that students of color can become a higher priority. Today, I will be reading a testimony from an African-American high schooler who would prefer to stay anonymous. This is one of many testimonies we have gathered. Begin quote, "When I was transferring to JHS as a freshman, my counselor didn't have me sign up for any honor classes or challenging classes, and she also didn't tell me about Concourse Nine or any other academic programs. My mom had to force her to sign me up for honor classes, and we had to hear about Concourse Nine from one of my friend's moms." End quote. Thank you for your time.
Hello, this is Jade Ranger. My son Jacob Ranger is currently a rising first grader at Matoka Elementary. And I'm calling because I was actually recently made aware of the efforts of the Racial Equity Student Alliance. Their efforts to demand equity for students of all races is actually so commendable, to say the least. And I truly believe that learning a more accurate account of our nation's history is something that is absolutely needed for our students. They need to see more representation of diversity, and not only literature, but honestly, their faculty and staff, too. The Racial Equity Student Alliance is doing good work and bringing attention, bringing attention to the cause that's long overdue. So I definitely support them, and I'm thankful that they've had the courage to lead such a worthy cause. This is something that's near and dear to my heart. And although I have little ones, I'm just in first grade and in preschool.
My name is Megan McKnight, and I'm a parent of a student at Jamestown High School, a student at Hornsby Middle School, and a student at Matoka Elementary School. I am also a secondary educator. Representation is essential for students of color. A diverse perspective enables both students of color and white students to learn from experiences outside of their own. I want each of my children to learn of the contributions from a variety of peoples and cultures. This world is rich and beautiful and diverse, and I want my children's education to reflect that. This cannot be done accidentally. It must be done purposefully and with thought and planning. I urge you to consider examining our curriculum to make sure that it reflects the diversity in our country. Thank you.
My name is Sophia Silgulovski, and I attend Jamestown High School. I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance, which is a group of fifty students who are pushing for a better WJCC school system that does all they can do to protect students of color and educate all on the African-American experience in America and throughout history. We've been pushing for reform since early summer and have gathered testimonies from both middle schoolers and high schoolers on discrimination they have experienced within our schools. We've been so fortunate to be able to work closely with the Village Initiative and have a meeting with the superintendent. It is crucial that we understand that though recent events have brought this issue to light, it is not a new issue. Generation after generation of African-American students have faced racism within the same classrooms we go to today. I am asking that we make sure that the next generation of students of color can go to WJCC schools, knowing that they will be a priority. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chanel Hill. I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance, and I go to Jamestown High School. Racism is still so prevalent in our school system. Children of color are not always given the same opportunity as the white children. We've been encouraged and expected to strive for the less by those who are supposed to set us up for a bright future. The way we are taught to racial history is distorted in a way that's comfortable for white people to digest, but is not correct. Representation of our race has been a privilege that children of color rarely get to experience. Racism is inflicted onto us by classmates and teachers that so normalized and tend to go without punishment, and we are taught to comply with this behavior rather than demand justice. I should never have to fear being discriminated against and treated less than should because of the color of my skin, especially in an academic environment. But I do, and this is a harsh reality for so many students as well. Enough is enough. Something must change. Thank you for your time, Chanel Hill.
Hi, my name is Mariah. I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance, and I go to Jamestown High School. As a Black student, I have not only witnessed discrimination and discomfort in school based on the color of my skin, I have also experienced it for myself. I know for myself and for other Black students that the things we go through on a daily basis makes being able to learn and grow in school much more difficult. The extra strain on our mental health can be decreased with the help of the school board making important changes, changes and opportunities for cultural awareness, and changes that will make everyone in our school feel included. I and over fifty other students desire change from covert disparagement and belittlement of Black students. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jackson Query. I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance, and I go to Jamestown High School. Like so many, I have chosen to stand against systemic racism and fight for equality. But if I had to choose, I'd choose whether or not to join this fight simply because I was- Three thousand nine hundred thirteen WJCC students have the privilege to choose. Three thousand nine hundred eighty Black students don't have that choice. Let's not forget the one thousand seven hundred seventy- ... other who probably don't have a choice. Your own burden of racism for their entire lives. The board, you can choose to use your power to protect not only those three thousand seven hundred fifteen- ... but your students as well. Please make that- Thank you for your time, Jackson Query.
My name is Paul Pierce, and I attend Jamestown High School. I am with the Racial Equity Student Alliance, which is a group of fifty students from the WJCC school district. They will be reading two testimonies of discrimination from high schoolers who prefer to stay anonymous at this time. Begin quote, "An art teacher at War Hill High called an African-American student the N-word." End quote. Begin quote, "I have seen teachers using an ethnic voice to intimidate a Black character. I have seen the frequent use of the N-word from various non-Black students. I have a friend who reported racial discrimination to the school staff and nothing was done. I have seen people touching a Black classmate's hair without their permission. I have seen the promotion of the watermelon stereotype. I have seen the discouragement and suppression of African-American vernacular English by multiple teachers." End quote. We cannot let this stand. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Hannah Rubin. I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance, and I go to Lafayette High School. At Lafayette, I witnessed its negative impact on Black students, faculty, and staff. Although strikes have been taken towards equality, there has still been equity and lack of diversity within honors and AP classes. At this elementary school, I've noticed a trend in advanced classes consisting of primarily white students. Little to no minority has missed, not including myself. Crawford Community must be favored for minorities, especially children of color. According to schooldigger.com, Lafayette consists of approximately fifty-five percent white students, twenty-one percent African-American students, fifteen percent Hispanic students, and various other minorities in the remaining nine percent. So Lafayette is a diverse school. All classes should be in visual representation.
My name is Sarah Harris from Jamestown, and I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance. I'd like to read a testimony in the WJCC district that illustrates the racial tensions that still exist in our schools. This is something that warheads beyond common, so common that the people of color have become numb to it. There is getting called the N-word by someone who shouldn't say it, or getting a seating chart where all the children of color are stopped in one corner in the back. I've seen Black students targeted by teachers and labeled as troublemakers, and we insist they sit put in the classroom, ignore and not give them proper instructions, and overall- ignored and not given proper instructions, and overall failed by the system. I've been called a multitude of racial names by people who weren't of color. I think I'm extremely lucky as I haven't been targeted yet. And it also made me quiet. It made me not want to speak up as I lose good ground with people who didn't have the same morals as me. I'm beginning to realize more and more who my allies are, and that double grows more and more as people Thank you for your time.
My name is Charles and I'm a high schooler in the WJCC district. I'm with the Racial Equity Student Alliance. Schools should be a place of sanctuary for all the student body, where students can grow, learn, and be safe. However, the current WJCC school system does not provide equal protection when it comes to African American students. Students spend the majority of their week within these four walls. The experiences they have within school will shape who they are. It is crucial that no acts of discrimination be permitted so that all students can receive the education they deserve. We are asking for change within the WJCC school system. We want there to be more severe consequences for racist, large stereotypes and acts. We want there to be an anonymous way to safely report discrimination within every school in the WJCC district. We want students of color to be a priority. Thank you for your time.
This is Parvina Benyadlu from 211 Thomas Milton Lane, Williamsburg, Virginia 23185. I am calling to say that there is a significant issue in our schools involving racism and the discrimination of Black people. Together, more than fifty students, including myself, are working to address these issues and change the school's environment. Our goal is to achieve equity throughout the school system. As a white person, I recognize my easier experience in these schools. However, it is my responsibility to stand up for the people who are not getting an equal opportunity and are being discriminated against on a regular basis. Furthermore, it is your responsibility to protect your students, provide equal care, and ensure equal treatment and equal opportunities for them, no matter the color of their skin. We have spoken with the superintendent and have written them a letter clearly addressing these issues and our demands to solve them. I would also like to re-highlight the fact that these are not new issues and they have been going on for generations. To conclude, change in our schools must be implemented.
My name is Bridget Palero and I attend Jamestown High School. I am supporting the Racial Equity Student Alliance, which is a group of fifty students who are pushing for a better WJCC school system that does all they can to protect students of color and educate them on the African American experience and America and throughout history. We have been pushing for reform since early summer and have gathered testimonies from both middle and high schoolers on discrimination they have experienced within our schools. We've been so fortunate to be able to work closely with the Village Initiative and have a meeting with the superintendent. It is crucial that we understand that though recent events have brought these to light, it is not a new issue. Generation after generation of African American students have faced racism within the same classrooms we go to today. I am asking that we make sure the next generation of students of color can go to WJCC schools, knowing they will be a priority.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Binkum Mendez. I'm a resident of Jamestown County and a member of the Village. I'm calling in support of the diverse group of fifty or so WJCC high school students who have recently organized over the course of about a month to gather student and recent alumni testimonies of racially motivated mistreatment, discrimination, and exclusion. These testimonies are powerful reminders of the longstanding racial inequities that unfortunately persist in WJCC schools as they do at many schools. We at the Village would just like to urge the WJCC administration to take swift action to both acknowledge and address these students' very reasonable concerns, which they presented recently to Dr. Heron and members of the WJCC leadership team. It's time to take decisive action to end the continuing legacies of racial inequity in WJCC schools. Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Heron and members of the school board. My name is Amy Cork. I'm a parent of two children in the WJCC school division, a professor at William &amp; Mary, and a member of the Village Initiative. Thank you for the opportunity to give comments. I'm speaking tonight in support of the WJCC high school and middle school students who have brought forward deeply troubling accounts of racism within our schools. The Village Initiative held our integrations then and now forum last fall, where we heard testimonies from multiple generations of Black students about the racial discrimination they have experienced over the years within our schools. We know that these issues are not new, and I urge the superintendent and the school board to act swiftly and decisively to address the concerns that these courageous students are facing. Thank you.
I believe that concludes our business comments. I'd just like to thank our students who did call in. It takes a lot of courage to call in and share your thoughts. And I know while we are uber focused on creating, while we are uber focused on creating our new virtual academy and getting schools off, up and running in a virtual world, we're not going to lose sight of equity. And I'm sure staff are keenly aware of equity issues. So thank you again for the Village and our students who are engaged and appreciate those comments. With that, we'll move on to item six point one, proposed agenda items, the preliminary financial report and year-end spending plan. I'll turn that over to Dr. Heron and staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ewing is going to present the financial report on, in particular, the end of year spending plan this evening. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This evening, I'll be presenting to you our preliminary financial status as of June 30th and the proposed year-end spending plan for fiscal year 2020. It's important to note that each year we bring this to you in the month of September. However, we have not gone through our external audit at this point, so these numbers are preliminary and they are unaudited. My team and I have worked hard to make sure the information presented this evening is as accurate as possible. But as we go through the audit process over the next several weeks, these numbers could change slightly. As you know, by state code, we are not allowed to carry over funds from year to year. It is vital that we do not operate in a deficit, so we must act in a financially responsible and conservative manner, which results in a surplus at the end of the year. The contract that the city and county have for the joint operation of WJCC schools requires that the school division return any unallocated funds to the governing bodies along with a year-end spending plan. The city council and county board of supervisors must then approve or not approve that spending plan. I will first share with you this evening the status of the Child Nutrition Services Fund. In the spring, we were projecting a deficit of approximately five hundred ninety-four thousand. Fortunately, our revenue ended up being higher than we had projected. This is a result of more meals being distributed through the Grab and Go program than originally anticipated, and CNS also switched from the seamless summer option to the summer food service program, which provides a higher rate of federal reimbursement. Our revenue totals three point six five million and our expenditures total three point nine four million. So we will end the year with a deficit of two hundred ninety-four thousand. This will reduce our fund balance from approximately eight hundred sixty-eight thousand to five hundred seventy-four thousand. Moving on to the operating fund. With the closure of schools mid-March due to COVID-19, we implemented several cost-saving measures and limited purchases to only the bare minimum. I was going to say we purchased essential items only, but since we develop a budget of need, everything is essential. You might remember that our preliminary revenue projections from April and May were also very conservative and assumed no sales tax revenue would be received for May and June sales. Fortunately, we did not see a decline in sales tax revenue and met our budgeted amount for sales tax. Our operating fund revenue totals one hundred forty-one point seven million and expenditures total one hundred thirty-six million. So we ended fiscal year 2020 with a surplus of five point seven million or four point zero eight percent of the total operating budget. This amount includes two hundred sixty-two thousand in revenue received in excess of the budget appropriation and five point five million saved through extremely cautious spending and planning. Two million dollars of these surplus funds have already been allocated to support our fiscal year 21 operating budget by Jamestown County and the City of Williamsburg. One point six million of the savings is due to attrition. Attrition occurs annually with the natural employment cycle of most organizations. When employees retire or resign, a new employee coming in may not be as experienced and will be hired with a lower cost to the division. In addition, unfilled positions also contribute to the overall attrition amount. Due to the school closure in March, several positions were not utilized this spring, such as substitutes, tutors, homebound and home-based teachers, and spring athletic coaches. Select academic stipend payments were also suspended in April through June. Estimated savings from these positions was approximately eight hundred fifty thousand. Mr. Baker is going to talk more about this in tonight's Return to Learn presentation. Energy savings were also realized from school buildings being closed and buses not transporting students to and from school. These savings amounted to approximately nine hundred fifty thousand. The proposed spending plan before you this evening includes the following items, which address the impact of COVID-19. The first item is digital curriculum development. WJCC teachers from grades K through 12 and specialty areas are collaboratively developing digital curriculum. This includes identifying resources and creating assessments that can be used during remote learning and once we return to classrooms. Orders one and two content have been developed this summer using the Division's CARES Act funding. This request will allow completion of quarters three and four content and is estimated to cost five hundred thousand. The second item is air filtration and air purifiers. A vital piece of the Division's health mitigation plan is the use of higher particulate filtration filters that will improve the air quality of classrooms and in buildings to reduce the number of bacteria and particles in the air. In rooms where the use of new filters is not possible, we plan to use HEPA air purifiers. This request is to purchase three hundred air purifiers and seven thousand five hundred air filters at an estimated cost of one hundred fifty thousand four hundred fifty dollars. The last item is protective learning shields, which are recommended to provide instructional staff with a physical shield when providing small group instruction, providing feedback, completing assessments, or working with individual students. We have made a partial purchase of four hundred fifty-eight tri-fold shields utilizing City of Williamsburg CARES Act funds. This request will allow for the purchase of six hundred seventy-two additional shields at an estimated cost of one hundred thousand. As you can see, the items included in this year's spending plan all relate to COVID-19 and our ability to safely and effectively deliver instruction to students. When developing the spending plan request, the health and wellness of our students was our top consideration. We are grateful for your support of the plan and we look forward to working with our funding partners to meet these pressing needs. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Ewing? Kelly?
Sure. Thank you for this and I appreciate staff's very thoughtful look at how we can utilize these funds and what's, and not necessarily what we can spend them on, but what we need to spend them on. And, you know, particularly the COVID requirements that we're going to have as we move further and further back into, in the buildings and in-person instruction. For the air filtration, air purifier, for the cost of one hundred fifty thousand, does that include installation or is that just buying the filters? Or do we already have personnel budgeted to do the installation?
I believe our internal staff will do the installation of the filters.
Okay, great. I think your plan is well thought out. I think they're all very necessary, they're all very justifiable, and I hope it gets every consideration at the city and the county. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time opening my documents on board docs tonight. So I had made a note asking about the leftover funds from fiscal year eighteen and nineteen, but I can't reference what page that was on. So does that question make sense to you?
Spending plan items from eighteen and nineteen?
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, page three.
Sure, yes, of course, page three. I can't. I'm sorry, I can't open. Yeah, could you answer that, please? Thank you.
The FY18 items that were remaining and carried over were some textbook purchases that we made last summer and the parking lot at Central Office, the repaving. So we had estimated a little higher than the actual costs. So we had some funds left over that the city and county would then maintain. And then same with the fiscal nineteen spending plan. Our estimates were a little higher than the actuals. So we are only carrying forward the bus replacements and the threat vulnerability assessment.
So I just want to be clear on what happened with those excess dollars. Did they stay with the localities or are they being folded into this?
They stay with the localities because those funds each year are returned to the localities. And as we make purchases with the approved spending plan items, we send invoices and get reimbursed for those expenditures.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Yeah, I also want to echo Mr. Kelly's congratulations about doing such a really good job saving money in a really difficult time. It's really important. And I also want to thank the localities for allowing us to roll over two million dollars to this fiscal year. That was incredible and it's going to help us get through this year. But I just, I want to, you know, say this, you saved a larger amount than normal, a larger percentage than our budget. So just to, just to address people, you know, someone who might be wondering, that's a lot of money left over. Do you really need that money? And I heard you say, everything we budget is essential, and I agree with that. But if you could, you know, you or Dr. Heron could just speak to that just for a minute about, you know, how we budget for what we need and that the actions that you took at the end of this last fiscal year were extraordinary to save money in a financial crisis in addition to a public health crisis. If you could just speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Cook. And I'll tag team with Ms. Ewing on this one as well. I mean, obviously, one of the main things we did was to freeze all open positions last year at that time and didn't fill. A lot of the positions and some of them never got filled in the system. Another item that was stopped automatically was professional development, which in a learning organization, that's a pretty significant budget. People weren't able to travel at the beginning of the pandemic and through it up to this point. So that did cut a lot of our normal expenses out as well. And we actually shut down the credit cards, all the spending at the school level as well. So very little, there was a lot of end-of-year funds and funds that normally are used for materials for everyday operations of a school that weren't used. We did have a reduction, I believe, in legal fees as well. We didn't have as much as normal. I don't know if that was due to the pandemic or different situation, different year, but we had about ninety thousand left in that. And there were some considerable funds in contracted services, I believe. For example, grounds maintenance, as far as we understand, did not continue. And so there were lots of different contracts that weren't fulfilled as a result of being in a very unusual circumstance with the pandemic. And I don't know if, Ms. Ewing, you have anything else to drop in? I know you've been, we've been going through some of this and really looking at all of the pieces. Really, the personnel piece is the largest piece of this in terms of saving funds and not paying for tutors and coaches and all of those things that are part of our normal, everyday work.
And then just, I support this plan. I think everything you've asked for is reasonable. And, you know, I think that it's a lot of money to hand back to the localities. So, and I don't think, I think you are wise not to make a long wish list in these really difficult times. But one thing that's been really weighing heavily on me is the fact that our teachers didn't get a raise this year because of the difficult budget time and that those of, those are, our employees did not get a raise, not just our teachers. And our employees who participate in our health plan experienced an increase in cost. And now employees who have children, school-aged children who are now not in school are now experiencing an additional unbudgeted expense. And so that's been weighing heavily. And I don't know how much it would cost. I know that you've been working with the county and I appreciate that, to provide a discounted program for teachers to, a safe place for them to provide daycare for their kids while they're working. kids while they're working, because everyone is working. And so, I just wonder if we can, what my colleagues think, what you think about asking for some money to set aside to further subsidize what's already being subsidized to help people not take a budgetary hit, given the circumstances. So, I don't know what everyone else thinks about that, but it's been weighing heavily on me.
And if my colleagues weigh in on that, what are your thoughts on Ms. Cook's proposal? You know, Dr. Heron, is there a dollar amount that could be associated with this that would help defray the cost of childcare?
It's difficult to set a dollar amount, but I do, I believe that the James City County has allocated through the CARES Act fund an amount of $50 that employees can have towards any childcare that they choose to use per week.
A way to run those numbers really quickly, if we allocated something similar, like what would that dollar amount be that we might want to use as year-end spending?
It's hard to do in the moment to understand just how many people need childcare. I know Mr. Baker had some of the initial accommodation requests for that. Mr. Baker, you may have a number?
Not a huge number so far of people have actually asked for the request for childcare.
What do other colleagues think? Ms. Cooks?
I think Mrs. Cook makes a good point. I mean, if we are, we are, a lot of demands on our teachers and, you know, those who are expecting their children to be in school versus now they have to pay them for daycare. And I think it would just be equitable to go along with what the county's guidelines is for their employees to kind of do the same thing with our employees. I think that's a full and reasonable and I'm very willing to support that. I think that's, that'd be a great, great thing to do for our employees as well.
Are there others that support this? I know, Ms. Young, you've been waiting patiently.
Well, I just was going to, I know Mr. Baker stated that there wasn't that many people that had asked for it. Do we have any, Mr. Baker, do we have any idea what that number is or would you like to just send that to us later?
If I could get an official number, I think right now, I think from the people asking for requests, it's about maybe more like in the 30s or 40s that are asking for an accommodation as we're on path one. And that accommodation might be an issue of can I work remotely or can, hey, like a teacher situation is, who is working in person, the accommodation request might be, can I have first block planning so I can take my child to childcare at 8:00 AM versus have that kind of accommodation? We can get some more data.
Okay, I'd appreciate more data. And are these teachers that would normally have to pay for childcare and daycare or childcare while they were teaching?
No, I think most of them are people that, because they're children or school-aged children.
Okay, that's a good point. Because I think that's good for us to know because that does make a difference for teachers. I would support that moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
I would just like to make sure that we're aligned with the county. So, if we understand what the county's doing and just make sure we're in alignment with what their processes and criteria are for participation.
That's a good point.
And I, I agree. I don't know exactly what the county is doing. But I agree with Mr. Kelly that we want to be doing at least what the county is doing if they're doing it. And that's sort of, I hesitate if all of that money back to the county unless some of it was earmarked to do just do that. I'd like to know, yeah, that would be helpful.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
I was just going to say, would this money come out of CARES funds? Or would this be from the end-of-year spending plan? Is that?
Our option this evening is to use end-of-year funds because we don't have any additional CARES Act funding. It's all already been used for curriculum writing and PPE within our system. So, this would be adding to the end-of-year spending plan and putting a set aside amount that teachers could apply for help with childcare. So, I think in the county, I can, I will check the process and the amount as well and provide that for you. But I would imagine they've set aside a certain amount that employees can apply for $50 per week towards any childcare. But I'm sure there's a limit on that amount as we would have to do as well.
I would very much like that information.
Yeah, I'd like a price tag. I mean, because it could be that it's too much, I don't know. But I would like to find out what, you know, what would be reasonable to, as Mr. Kelly and Dr. Beer said, be in alignment with, you know, with our funding partners. And I also, since we're talking about childcare, I just want to, one of the things that I've, you know, heard in the community is, well, I just want to say that, you know, the governor gave the responsibility for dealing with childcare in the pandemic to the Departments of Social Services, not to the school divisions. And so, as such, you know, I think they've been working on that. And I think both Ms. Vinroot and Mr. Conifax of the county at a recent Board of Supervisors meeting spoke very eloquently to the question of if you, you know, you can provide childcare, but you can't open the schools. And just to be really clear, I don't know if you want to speak to that, Dr. Heron, childcare centers can place limits, a variety of limits that schools cannot place. And so, there is a distinct difference in why childcare is something that we need to do to allow people to work. But there's a reason that childcare can be open and schools cannot because they're different animals. And I don't know if you want to speak to that or not, but just to be clear.
I think you've expressed it adequately. I think it's the number of students per adult in an environment as opposed to in a classroom. And it is a very different environment with, in a childcare environment. I'm not very familiar with that. I'm more familiar with the school environment, obviously. But I think they've been able to manage childcare environment with very little issues with COVID-19.
Anyway, yeah, if you could provide a price tag, I'd be interested in considering that and pondering that as part of our request.
Summer?
I just wanted to clarify for our listening public that typically, our year-end spending is more like in the 1% to 2% range. And here we are at 5% because of all of the draconian kind of actions that we had to take because of the pandemic. And so, and we were being as fiscally, you know, it was a time of not knowing what in the world we were going to be facing. So, I think I also agree with my colleagues that if the amount is something that's comparable to what the county is doing, it would be nice to at least have our teachers remain whole, a little bit whole, rather than go deeper in the hole with every, all the stress they're dealing with, all of the added work that's on their plate. And then to be hit financially as well is a hard pill to swallow.
Mr. Dow, did you have additional thoughts?
Nothing really additional to what's already been expressed. Yeah, I just want to say that as Ms. Cook explained it, the dollar figure associated with this, I think it's a great idea if we can, we can do it responsibly. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our teachers, our educators, just as a benefit of being an educator in WJCC, that we've struck a deal for them for $60 a week, is that right, for childcare?
That's correct.
And I don't know that any other organizations have that benefit. Is that right?
I think school systems across the state have set up some form of childcare. I don't know what the cost is, but I think ours is very reasonable and working within partnership with the county.
Yeah. So, I would just, me personally, I would keep that in mind as we're looking at what that dollar figure looks like down the road and as we're doing responsibly.
Ms. Young?
I just would like to make sure that we've clarified that this is, this childcare is not for, this is for school-aged children while their parent, teacher is instructing other students. And that's, I think that's a very clear difference in why we're asking for this.
I would have to agree with all my colleagues. I think it's definitely something that we would like to pursue and want more information on and understand the cost of that. And the only other thing that I would point out with regard to the items for year-end spending is for the virtual instruction, the $500,000. Just want to make that clear for the public that that amount of money needs to be spent. Even if our schools opened up tomorrow, we have committed to 3,000 students attending virtually for the next year. So, we need to have virtual curriculum, even if we were to open schools tomorrow. Just want to make that. Were there any additional thoughts? Ms. Young?
I just had a question. I just, because I had been asking at other board meetings about state taxation. And I just want to make sure I understood correctly that that has not gone down, that the state taxes collected are, did you say they were the same or at a normal rate? I just need to make sure.
For fiscal '20, we met our budgeted amount. Because sales tax is two months behind for the current fiscal year, we won't start recognizing sales tax revenue until the month of September because those funds would be for July sales.
Okay.
Ms. Young, as soon as we have that number, we'll certainly tell you what it's looking like right now. I know there are some projections that there will be a decrease in local sales tax again, but we're not sure to what extent that that will be.
Thank you. Any additional questions? If not, I believe we're moving on to policies. Sorry.
Ms. Ewing done? Good? Nevermind.
Baker going?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to bring you a short presentation tonight under Return to Learn WJCC Forward that focuses mostly on staffing and some other things that show our management of the budget so far this year. Mr. Baker's going to start us off and Ms. Ewing's going to stay in case there's questions about finance. But this is just to bring you up to speed with some things that have been happening over the last three or four weeks. Mr. Baker?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. This evening, we will share information with you about the Division's needs during remote learning and staffing adjustments to support our Return to Learn Plan. In preparation for the school year, leadership reviewed every position to see how it aligns with various paths of our Return to Learn Plan forward WJCC schools. Considered the decreased need to temporary workers, stipend positions that should be delayed, and the potential reassignment or for loads of certain support positions. We also reviewed cost savings from the spring to make projections for the first nine weeks. For example, last spring, we saved approximately $615,000 by not hiring as many substitute workers during the school closure. Traditionally, the Division uses about 340 substitutes between April and June. That money is built into the budget but was not needed during the school closure. The first nine weeks of this school year, we anticipate a savings of around $200,000. Historically, we don't use as many substitutes at the beginning of the school year. Another area of savings last spring came from not employing people who serve as tutors or deliver homebound services, resulting in a savings of $65,000. We anticipate experiencing some savings in this area too while in a remote environment. Finally, select academic and athletic stipends were temporarily halted when schools closed in March, leading to a $171,000 savings. Anticipate continued savings through reduced stipends for the first nine weeks of this school year as well, totaling approximately $30,000. This fall, 36 stipends will be suspended due to the inability to work while we're in a remote environment, and 50 will continue as they are essential to support instruction and other functions. You may recall that as part of the spring budget process and reconciliation, 31 positions were eliminated from the fiscal year operating budget. You see those positions here on the screen. In total, the budget was reduced by nearly $1.5 million. In addition to that, we are also being cautious about filling vacant positions now. While the jobs on the screen are not technically frozen, we are being selective about which positions we are filling immediately. These are examples of jobs that are not being filled right away either because lower enrollment or because of lower, I'm sorry, because of lower limited during remote learning. The positions will be essential as we move to Path Two or Return to Learn Plan is also Path Three and Four. As we shared with you at a recent board meeting, difficult decisions needed to be made when looking at employee groups with roles and responsibilities that are limited in the remote learning environment. In effort to keep all of our valuable employees, we looked at every position to identify where people might be able to fulfill a new role temporarily rather than be furloughed. I'm happy to report that we've been able to offer a reassignment to every staff member who was in a position to be considered for furlough for the first nine weeks. Unfortunately, 25 employees did not wish to accept a reassignment of duties and we are recommending them to be furloughed this evening. But the majority of our employees were eager to remain part of the WJCC school's family. For example, 45 bus aides who regularly interact with children on the school bus will temporarily work to support one of the employee childcare options that is offered in the partnership with Parks and Rec. By providing staff members to assist in the four Rec Connect locations, we are able to reduce the weekly childcare cost to employees. Another example that you see on the screen is the role of media assistant. For the short term, these staff members will also serve as the attendance associate for the Virtual Academy. They will also be responsible for working with Virtual Academy teachers and administrators to capture attendance for students for their homeschool as they are enrolled in the Virtual Academy. As you can see, we've looked for additional assignments for the athletic directors and trainers. So, while they are preparing for what we hope will be the start of the VHSL sports in December, they are also able and available to serve as substitutes if a teacher is out. In total, nearly 200 staff members who were once on the brink of furlough have come together to fill the immediate need of the Division through reassignment. That is incredible number of people, people who are willing to step up and step in to fill the gaps and serve our students and support one another to the best of their ability in the remote learning environment. Madam Chair, that completes our presentation this evening. Ms. Ewing and I are available to answer questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Ms. Hummel?
Sure. I just wanted to thank, thank you, Mr. Baker and Ms. Ewing and Dr. Heron for what I know was a really difficult task to go through every single one of these positions to determine what alternatives could be worked out for these employees. And then I'm also just delighted at just everyone's flexibility and adaptability in these times to recognize that what they might have been doing for the past, I don't know, five to 10 years needs to be refocused in another way to help the big picture and to help all of us and our children and to save their paychecks. So, anyway, I just wanted to thank all of you because I know it's a Herculean task to work through those details.
Ms. Cook?
I'd like to echo Ms. Hummel's thanks and appreciation for the hard work. And, you know, I think we want to be, we want to be good stewards of public dollars, but I think we also want to, we don't want to be penny wise and dollar foolish. And we have an incredible institution and a really good infrastructure. So, I applaud you in keeping that together by, you know, shifting 200 people rather than risking losing them. I did have a question about the special education aides. That was a lot of special education aides. And when we do go back in person, that's a population I'm particularly concerned about in terms of educational equity. So, do you think that we'll be ready to pivot into?
Absolutely. We've actually posted some of those positions already. And Ms. Bourgeois has kept me a very tight look at when to bring those aides back. So, some were posted already. So, that number will decrease fairly quickly.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Baker or Ms. Ewing? Kelly?
Just want to say that, you know, this is really a good, a great example, the fiduciary responsibility we have with the taxpayers' money. You know, having the money left over at the end of last school year to talk with our funding partners about how partners about how that can, money can best be utilized. And, you know, these are, these are not 200 make-work jobs. I mean, these are, we are delivering, delivering education and delivering learning in a different way, and that requires different jobs from where we were when we were in person. Hopefully, as we, as we go towards the end of the year, we can segue back to, towards the in-person and move into that paradigm as well. But, you know, these are, these are positions that are important to do in our current paradigm. And I appreciate the good work that staff has done to figure out what was needed and to figure out how we can, we can best fill those with people who are on roles. So I think that's just, that's a great job. So, thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I echo everything that's been said. I really, I've said before to commend Dr. Heron and her staff because I know this took hundreds of hours to go through every single employee. And I was afraid that, that we would get to the point where, that we wouldn't have enough and we would just have to furlough people. And I just think that to get to that point where you, where you ultimately had an opportunity for everybody and a very small number decided they didn't want to do that, just speaks really highly of how hard you worked to try to help everybody in the system. And I, that really, that's really something, really.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Young?
I just want to echo what's already been said. I also want to thank those employees who have opted to, to work in other capacities to help out the school division because we need you. And so I want to thank Mr. Baker and his staff. I agree, 200 hours. See, that's why I could never do your job because, first of all, I wouldn't want to talk to people that much all the time. But I appreciate that you're willing to do it, and I appreciate you having taken that time. But I also, I'm very appreciative of our staff that have stepped up and are willing to help out the school division.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that it behooves the community to also understand that there are positions that still need to be filled, which are custodial workers. Is that correct, Dr. Heron?
Yes, we've actually taken open custodial positions, and some of the current staff are being transferred into those positions temporarily. So they're actually filled now, but they're filled with current staff in other positions.
So I think that with that in mind, I know the question is going to be asked, what are those that have not been furloughed? What will they be doing? Well, they are gainfully employed for the school division. And those that were not willing to, well, they were furloughed because they weren't willing to perhaps serve in that capacity that we do need. And so I do think that was a measure of, you know, your leadership and the division's leadership to continue with furloughing even though we have this need for custodial workers.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell.
Madam Chair, if I could for a moment, I'd be remiss not to give Mr. Snipes a shout-out tonight because Mr. Snipes' leadership team have been a huge piece of this reorganization of staff, and he really has worked night and day to make it happen along with the HR staff.
It's always a team approach, isn't it? You really, you just pull the team together, and they do such a wonderful job, really.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. I agree with what my colleagues have said. I have utter confidence and faith that you have combed every single position. And thank our staff for being like Gumby, because that's my mantra this year. I think everyone has to be flexible. And so, thank you, staff, who are willing to do what we need to do to serve our students. And then just wanted to echo Ms. Cook's concern about the special ed aides. And so just want to, as we keep our eye on equity at all levels, just want to make sure that we're, that we are truly meeting our students' needs. But I think you've done a great job, and I know, I know our staff are working hard differently. And thank you for doing that.
Unless there are additional questions or comments, now we're going to go to policies. That's the plan. Thank you, Mr. Baker and Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe Ms. Boujou is going to present the first policy this evening, some revisions to Policy JBBCC.
Thank you, Ms. Boujou.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. And Dr. Wardley is being kind enough to hand out a revised talking points revision sheet. We had provided one, and the line numbers were off, so we wanted to provide you something a little more aligned. I bring before you this evening Policy JBBCC currently titled Student Sexual Harassment Complaint Policy. It is a joint policy with GBCC, our Personnel Policy. This is being brought before you out of a compliance requirement. In April of 2020, the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights released the extensive Title IX revisions. The revisions themselves, I think, are 100 pages. The commentary and directions are about 2,000 pages, so it is very detailed. But an important part of this is that they did increase the requirements for all K-12 schools. As you know, Title IX has predominantly been focused on higher education. Recent years, it has been included in K-12 schools, and the revisions very clearly put an obligation on K-12 school divisions. The OCR regulations became effective August 14th of 2020, and it does require revising and renaming our current policies from JBBCC, GBCC, Sexual Harassment Complaint Policy to the Title IX policy. Our legal counsel has recommended we revise this as soon as possible in order to comply with new regulations. I'd like to thank Ms. Hummel and Dr. Beers for their flexibility in allowing us to schedule the policy committee meeting so that we are able to bring this to you for the September Policy revisions you're about to see align with VSBA Policy JFHA, Prohibition Against Harassment and Retaliation. It is part of their policy. Their policy actually combines general harassment and nondiscrimination with the Title IX policy. So we are using the Title IX wording. Other harassment, including sexual harassment that doesn't meet the Title IX definition, is currently covered under our Student Code of Conduct and Policy JB, Educational Opportunities, Harassment, Nondiscrimination, and Policy GB of the same name. We will continue to review and revise those as necessary during the school year, but it was important for us to address the Title IX components because of the new regulation date in August. At this time, I'm going to go through the revision, and I will be referencing line numbers to try to help. There are quite a few revisions to the policy, so if you would like to follow along with your revised policy. To begin, lines 27 through 37 provide the Title IX's regulation's definition for sexual harassment. "The conduct must be determined to be so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive that it effectively denies a person's equal access to the school board's education program or activity." This wording was not previously included. The policy committee did ask a question regarding the meaning of line 29, an employee of the school board conditioning the provision of an aid benefit or service, and that is referring to quid pro quo. On lines 39 through 41, these identify supporting policy for situations that do not meet the Title IX definition of harassment. And again, that would fall under Policy JB or GB and our Student Code of Conduct. Sexual harassment is specifically noted in our Student Code of Conduct. Beginning on lines 94 through 132, you're going to see a number of definitions, and there have been some adjustments here. There's some simple adjustments such as complainant and respondent. We used those years ago, and then it went to reporting party and responding party, and now it is back to complainant and respondent. Also, for actual knowledge on lines 96 through 99, it adds that any staff member with knowledge is required to report. Previously, actual knowledge was only applied once someone in a position of authority, like an assistant principal or principal, was made aware of it. Now it's, it's as soon as any staff member is aware. So that is a change. On lines 119 through 132, you'll see supportive measures explained. Previously, you probably heard them referred to as interim measures. These measures are designed to restore or preserve access to the educational program for both the complainant and the respondent. Beginning on lines 142 and going to lines 219, there is a clearly defined grievance process. Line 148 identifies the complainant and respondent are treated equitably in this process, and that's noted throughout the policy. It is a real emphasis in the regulations that both parties are treated fairly and that there is no presumption of guilt until that is determined. On line 214, you will see that the decision is based on a preponderance of evidence. It does not require clear and convincing evidence. That is similar to our current policy. Our current policy requires a preponderance of evidence. Another change can be found on lines 221 through 246, where it notifies that we are required to notify parties prior to interviewing them. And the notification must include details of the allegations, the specific conduct, dates, and locations of those are known. We're also now required to establish a criteria for the dismissal of a formal complaint. There are three prongs, and those can be found on lines 248 through 264. Formal complaint can be dismissed if it doesn't meet the Title IX definition of sexual harassment, if it's determined that the action is not school-related, or if it did not occur inside the United States. Investigation process is clearly defined on lines 266 through 321. Revisions of note in this section include, on line 278, you'll see that both parties do have an equal opportunity to present witnesses. Both parties also have an opportunity to review the report and submit written follow-up questions prior to a decision. On lines 325 and 326, you will see that the investigator and the decision-maker must be two different staff members. The investigator will complete the investigation process. They will provide the initial report to both parties. Those parties will have 10 days to review it and provide questions or additional information, and then the decision-maker will utilize all of that information to make a decision. There is also a very specific appeal process on lines 318 through 329. It allows review by a decision-maker other than a person, the person who made the initial decision. The policy committee actually asked if this impacts the role of the board in the appeal process, and it does not. Appeals could be reviewed by division staff, similar to our appeal process for long-term suspensions or by the board. Due to the changes in the process and the time allowed for review of information and submitting questions and the additional time that will be needed to work through all of that, you will see that the expanded, there are expanded timelines on lines 387 through 414. Every effort will be made to complete an investigation as quickly as possible. The timeline takes into consideration that the division does not have dedicated Title IX investigators who will, who will do this full-time. On lines 416 through 447, you see the delineation of the informal resolution process. Both parties must agree to participate in order for this process to be utilized. And if a student who is a minor agrees to participate, but the parents do not agree, then the process cannot move forward. Policy also does provide clear direction for record-keeping, retaliation, notification requirements, and false charges, and those can be found on lines 449 through 501. The policy committee did inquire about investigation if the employee or student is no longer enrolled. If the respondent is no longer a student or employee, the school division may but need not dismiss the complaint. So that is up to the decision of the school division. If the complainant is no longer enrolled, dismissal may be possible if specific circumstances prevent the recipient from gathering evidence sufficient to reach a determination as to the formal complaint or allegations. As you can see, there's a lot of new information here. So there's a very large training component. One of the requirements is that all staff be trained on this. Previously, it was instructional staff. Our legal counsel will be providing training modules this fall. There will be a one-hour training for all staff, and then there will be three two-hour trainings for investigators and decision-makers. We are going to avail ourselves of that opportunity because one of the record-keeping requirements is that any training materials be posted on our website. And so in order to make sure that we are absolutely providing the most accurate information, we're going to use their expertise to do that. There are new notification requirements, too. The division website does have the Title IX coordinator information posted. The new policy will also be posted upon approval, and once we have those training documents, they will also be posted. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Boujou. Questions for Ms. Boujou? Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I know one of the other questions, actually, there were a couple of them that were raised when we, when we had our meeting, policy meeting. And one of them was, if the student withdraws a complaint, but the parent doesn't want to draw, withdraw a complaint, how did, did you get an answer on that or?
The question is, I had noted it in my notes, was regarding the informal resolution process, where the students can, we can work through the complaint with them and not have to do the formal investigation. And if a student is, it's going to depend. If the student is a minor, then the parent has a say in it.
Okay, that's what I, and the other thing I thought, that I, I know it's in here, but Ms. Hummel and I both thought it would be useful if board members took advantage of this one-hour training module as well. I think that'd be good.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Additional questions?
I just had one, what's the requirement for being a decision-maker?
To be part of the training sessions for the investigators and.
Could it be any level of staff?
It could be a building, it could be a building administrator. It's actually done so that there can be flexibility with how that's done. It cannot be the investigator, but it could be that it's a building administrator. It can be central office. That's part of what we're going to have to identify as to who gets trained.
A long procedure, a lot of work, and I appreciate the committee as well as the staff in putting all this together. So it's a lot, a lot of work to come through all that.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
Thank you for going through our questions that Dr. Beers and I had and running them through the lawyer. So, and you said appeals could be reviewed by division staff, similar to our appeal process for long-term suspension by the board. So I guess my question is, what is the decision point where the school administration determines this is something to the board versus it doesn't? How does that work?
So with, using long-term suspension as an example, if Dr. Heron receives an request for an appeal as her designee, I will review it. If there's, if there's a different decision to be made there or some input, additional input to get, then I may have that discussion with the family. And if they are in consensus with that, then they'll acknowledge that in writing, and it doesn't come to the board. If they, if I, if there's nothing else I can offer, or if that's not going to be a consensus, then it will come to the board for review. So it would be similar to that. There also might be times, depending on the timing of the investigation versus the timing of a disciplinary matter, where you may not be available to hear an appeal because you're going to be hearing another process. And you can't adjudicate both because it might be connected. So if you're, if you're going to be hearing an expulsion on a matter and hearing an appeal on the matter at the same time, that might not align appropriately depending on timing.
And then I also agree with Dr. Beers that we really, if, if indeed we are part of the appeals process or could be part of an appeals process, I think it's incumbent on us as the board to get trained.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I agree. Are there additional comments or questions for Ms. Boujou? Thank you for the detailed walking us through line by line, step by step. This is a very thorough one. Go through, Ms. Cook?
This is a very minor question, but I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I want to make sure. On board docs, there's JBBCC red line in the whole. On Board Docs, there's JBCC red line, and the whole thing is stricken. And then there's the revisions, and that's just the whole new one. So you didn't combine the document where you struck all the, okay.
Correct. It was a user error. I just couldn't get it all to do it and get the line numbers to show up.
Fair enough. I just wanted to, yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure. That's what I thought, but I wanted to confirm since we're going to be voting on it next meeting.
Thank you. Okay. I believe we're moving on to the next policy, which is EBCD school closings. I'll start with Ms. Hummel or Dr. Beers?
This, Dr. Beers, do you want to, I'm just going to say, this came up at our last Board meeting, and there's, I think, a little, a bit of confusion about this policy and how it relates to the ability of, or I guess, the hour, should I say, of the Board to either have to do an approval of decisions such as whether we are going with a Path 1 or not. And so I think it just, Dow wanted us to bring it back, review it through policy and bring it up so that we could discuss it. And I think, Mr. Dow, you had some comments that you wanted to review with us?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Hummel and Madam Chair. I appreciate it. And yeah, I appreciate the fact that the Policy Committee moved so quickly to bring this to the Board for discussion. Two months, a month ago, two meetings ago, when I did take issue with procedures around the Board voting or not voting. I did make mention that we should look at that. I would like to look at that, but in a year. So that you brought it so quickly, I do appreciate. I really do. Madam Chair, would I be permitted to read my markup for the benefit of the Board?
It's now on Board Docs. So. Yeah, I guess rather than read that, I kind of want to get a sense from the Policy Committee, what was the conversation that you had with regard to the existing policy?
This is the first time I've seen this, so I.
No, we, you're seeing for the first time tonight this markup because we didn't get it until tonight. So when.
It hasn't gone to the Policy Committee.
So this markup did not go to the policy. What we looked at the policy as it stands, and we compared it to the VSBA policy, which is exactly the same. And we were looking at it, and I think, I think we were looking at it saying, we don't see any need for any changes to this policy as it currently stands. It meets and matches VSBA, and it basically is saying that it's an administrative decision about closing schools or the delay in opening or the early dismissal. Now, and in my mind, I think about closing schools as being weather-related, that you're, or hurricane-related, or some natural disaster, where you're actually closing a school. You're not doing any instruction. You are closing school regardless of modality. You're just closing school, and there is no instruction. That's the way I interpret this. I think, I think what we're dealing with with COVID is talking about a change in modality of education, which really doesn't even, closing schools, because schools aren't being closed. It's just a modality change. So that, those were the kind of discussions Dr. Beers and I were talking about because we didn't see Ms. Dow's.
And so I think it definitely should go back to Policy Committee. I guess, Mr. Dow, rather than read the whole thing, if you want to give a quick summary of your thoughts, and then definitely want to send it back to Policy and have.
Sure, yeah. And that's why I asked to have the latitude to read it because not until Thursday evening did I see on Board Docs that there was not a recommendation, and that's fine. But so then I had to get to work because I wanted to be able to have discussion because you guys gave us this opportunity to discuss it. But in reading it, I think I'd be able to really highlight where some strengths that are lent to Dr. Heron and her authority to shut down schools and reopen schools, and strengths to the Board to be able to offer guidance, guidelines towards reopening schools. But if I can't read it, I'll just continue. Read it.
Go ahead. Read the whole.
All right.
Could you also, in addition to read it, kind of explain your thinking as you go through?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And so the original begins, the superintendent or his or her designee may order the closing, the delay in opening, or the early dismissal. And then I add to, due to inclement weather or other emergency. And so that was added because as I looked at policies across the country, from New York to California, that is a very definitive statement in many policies. And I also added here that our original word count is about 70 words. The average word count for a school closings policy is anywhere between 165 and 225 words. And so they go into a little bit more depth of guidance on what constitutes a requirement to close schools. And just as Ms. Hummel mentioned today, that when she thinks about, when we think about school closings, we think about weather-related incidents. I continue here, when the superintendent has made the decision to close any or all schools for other than weather-related circumstances, and the closure is sustained by more than a school semester, the superintendent will provide to the school board a formal recommendation for reopening the schools. So we have, what I saw when I was researching was that there were some things missing, two things missing, in fact. Any consideration for circumstances that prolong school closures indefinitely, that was missing in our document, that was missing in the vast majority, and I want to say all of the policies that I had reviewed from coast to coast. The second thing that was missing was Board oversight in circumstances other than inclement weather closures. There was no, so we haven't experienced a pandemic in more than 100 years. This original policy was crafted within the last 50 years, and then it was revised, I think, last year, 2019. And so, and neither of those circumstances did it consider anything other than inclement weather outages or short-term emergencies, short-term emergencies, which is not what we face here. And so that's why I add this language. And it is just language at this point for discussion because this could be a collaborative document. But I think that, I think there's something that needs to be considered. So, and the closure sustained by more than a school semester, the superintendent will provide to the school board a formal recommendation for reopening the schools. The Board, by a vote of its members, will approve the superintendent's recommendation or seek an alternative reopening plan from the superintendent. And I think that's key there because I believe everybody in this room recognizes the extreme work that Dr. Heron does, or any superintendent that we'd have serving WJCC Division, and that they live this job. They live this, and so we really need to be relying on the superintendent that is to bring forward to us the best recommendations. And I say recommendations because that's exactly what we experienced, what we learned here. She brought us four, and not only four, five recommendations for returning to learn, one being an entirely, an entire years of virtual learning. So that's, that's the, that was the impetus behind that statement. An approved reopening plan that contains restrictive in-person attendance protocols shall be reviewed by the Board at least two weeks before the end of each affected marking period. And so here we have that if the superintendent has brought a recommendation to the Board and the Board agrees with it, approves it, that is restrictive to in-person learning, that we would know that with this policy change, the schools would not necessarily be open, and that we still have an issue of restrictive learning environment. And so we still have an opportunity to look at paths forward to reopening. And so it provides a little bit of a timeline here to reviewing the current path and reopening the schools as quickly and as reasonably as possible. And then this final note, nothing in this policy shall prevent the superintendent from seeking the most or least restrictive plans for reopening the schools, still showing that this is a, the value of the superintendent and the hard reality that she needs to make, she or he needs to make the most prudent and hard decision for the division. Something that I found, one other thing that I found was that in my research, no Board, and this is significant, it was significant for me, no school board has a pandemic closure policy. They, none of them discuss or itemize what closures should look like on a timeline. Policies leave it up to the superintendent to decide. We've seen that across the Board. We see that in the majority of divisions here in our, in our, in our region. And the majority of Boards in our region, in fact, the majority of Boards in our region circumvented their own policy by voting on the superintendent's recommendation, and that's wrong, right? Because the policy stated that it was the superintendent's decision, they circumvented their own policy. I don't agree with it, and I think that's why this needed to come back to the Board for consideration. Because if we deemed that, or if other Boards deemed that it was necessary to vote, and yet they circumvented their policy, that was wrong. So that was, that's my explanation for this policy recommendation. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for all your time and effort and research. Colleagues have input? Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I'm looking at that, I guess next to the last sentence. An approved reopening plan that contains restrictive in-person attendance protocols shall be reviewed by the Board. Why does it need to be reviewed if it's been approved?
Because that plan may.
Approving it, the Board?
That's right.
The Board's approved it. Why does it have to be reviewed?
The Board would approve a plan that needed to come to the Board because schools had been closed for longer than a semester. And so if the plan that the superintendent brings to the Board is restrictive in nature, it doesn't get us back to a, what we would call a Path 4, no holds barred, everybody's in classroom, then the Board needs to continue to review the plans to get us back to Path 4, a pre-pandemic school environment.
I just, I think the other thing I'm concerned. Times, it's, we may have an emergency where, and it may last quite a while, that needs to be dealt with immediately. It's of, oh, we need to get the Board together and, I hesitate to take that away from the super. I'm not in a position, and I don't think any Board member's in a position to fully understand what that emergency might be, or happened, or I'm uncomfortable with that.
That responsibility, that authority hasn't been taken in this markup. You see it in that first line, the superintendent or his or her designee may order the closing and delay in opening of the, excuse me, or the early dismissal, due to, which is what I added, due to inclement weather, other emergency, other emergency of any or all schools in order to protect the safety and welfare of the student and staff. So that's, that's codified here. That's not changed. That remains in place.
But so we don't have.
What we are talking about is timeline, though.
But we do need to do that and to reopen the schools. Whereas we, we'll review that plan when it's time to reopen the schools, correct?
I don't understand your question.
Well, I'm going back to that same sentence. An approved reopening plan that contains restrictive in-person attendance protocols shall be reviewed by the Board at least two weeks before affected marking period. Have to approve that, correct?
Yeah, by a vote.
Yes, approved, and I'm assuming the Board approves. What is the magic, what is two weeks?
Two weeks before, two weeks before the next marking period and on some counsel that I've received from some other individuals, two weeks.
You what?
Two weeks before the end of a marking period and upon counsel from some other individuals. Two weeks almost seems too restrictive, not enough time for students and parents to prepare for a change in their academic environment. But that's what it's to do. It's to review the approved plan for reopening the phase that we're in and to discuss the superintendent's recommended plan, or if she brings a new recommended plan for that next marking period.
Or a third recommended plan.
Exactly.
Or a fourth recommended plan.
Which is similar to what she's given us to date. Yet the Board did not have any say in that discussion.
So you think a modification.
In public, let me add in public.
Every time there's a modification.
I'm sorry, sir.
Every time there's a modification to the plan, we have to approve it?
That's what I would be asking for.
So it's like it's a new plan.
That's what I would be asking for, up until the point where schools are open.
I just, I find that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, I'm perfectly comfortable, you know, sending this back through policy so that Dr. Beers and Ms. Hummel can ask questions that are embedded in this with staff and then having the lawyer review it and have it come back to the Board. So, you know, I think that's a good way to proceed. I'll say that I'm, as Mr. Dow alluded to, I'm intensely proud of how we handled this by not voting it. We followed our own policy, and I think that's something that is a good thing. And just in general, I'm a fan of brevity when it comes to policies, so not in meetings, clearly, but, but in policies, in the written word, yes. So, but I think, you know, I think there are some, I'd like the attorneys to weigh in, but so I think the, other than weather-related circumstances is perhaps problematic because a tornado or a hurricane could wipe out half a town, right? So it could be weather-related circumstances. There's no reference to like a date certain, so a plan could be, the plan that this asked for could be, there's no clarity around how clear that plan has to be. So that is another reason that I think the way it is probably is just fine. And then I think the thing about restrictive in-person attendance protocols, you know, Mr. Dow, you referenced Path 4. That's not, that is not, does not lack restrictive protocols, right? Path 4, we're going to be in social distancing land for a long, 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 long time. So that's not ops normal, right? And, I mean, am I correct in that, that Path 4 is not ops normal, right?
Path 4 would get us back to as normal as possible with every student back in the building. At the same time, Path 3 brings half the students in at one time, which allows for social distancing.
Right, but even, I mean, ops normal is probably a.
It would be hard to imagine coming back with everybody without masks and some restrictions in place to, for safety.
Right, cafeterias, auditoriums. So, so I think some definitions here are probably problematic because, so I guess my question for understanding is, between the way we did it and the way you'd like to see this policy implemented, what's the, what would be the meaningful difference? I think what I hear you saying is that you would have just preferred to take action to bless the Path 1, 2, 3, 4 as a package?
Yeah, that's right. I think the meaningful difference is that, that the Board take a more active approach in a very dynamic need for our community, which is, how do we get our students back and at what phase, what timeline that affects the community, that affects our teachers, our students, our. students, our parents. And again, as I mentioned nearly a month ago, that takes a great deal of heat and pressure off of our superintendent and places it on the shoulders of those that were, I believe, elected and appointed by the community to rise to that occasion. So we did have an opportunity to discuss this in the public eye, however, the decision had already been made. And so there wasn't going to be a whole lot of discourse or debate on that, and what's the best path, what does the data say between us? We were asking questions, but to, to what end? The decision was made. And so I, I think that for the community's sake, those elected and appointed needed to rise to that occasion.
Young?
And I agree with that statement. One of the things that's concerned me for some times is that often Dr. Heron has asked this board for, not in this case, I want to make sure that that's understood, but has asked for what we think, and we kind of skirt the issue, but I think in a situation like this, I think it's very important that the, the community knows that the superintendent has our support. And instead of, I mean, that was a very brief discussion when it happened, and it should have been a very lengthy discussion about our support for the superintendent and, and maybe we should have maybe tabled it and maybe come back with some reasons, because one of the things I've been asked is why, why did I support the superintendent? And I think that given the opportunity to have discussed it as a board would have benefited the community.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I wanted to weigh in on that because I'm a little confused. I, I recall each of us sharing sometimes a 10-minute deposition on, on how we supported Dr. Heron. We went around the table and each of us talked a really long time about how and why we supported Dr. Heron. So for me, I think this is a slippery slope going into operations, so, and I'm with Ms. Cook, I believe in brevity, I think good policies are, are brief. But I, I think at this point, it definitely needs to go to legal, it definitely needs to go back to policy, and we need to really grapple with this. But I haven't heard from Mr. Kelly, and then I'll come back to you, Ms. Young.
Olivia wants to say something. I, I assume the two of you did not like the sexual harassment policy, it was just-
That was really long.
So, so as I, I mean, as I look at this, I just want to make sure that we stay in our swim lane and that, you know, we, we don't go beyond that. So, you know, as a school board, we're, we're here to watch the money, we're here to make sure, we're to manage our one employee, which is our superintendent, and, you know, give her the, our expectations for, for our learning. So when I look, when I look at the policy and, and Mr. Dowell, I do appreciate all the great work that you've put into this and, and the thought and the research, and I think that's all great. Couple of questions I have. So you have close any or all schools for more, for, for other than weather-related circumstances. So our schools were closed for three weeks, and then we were learning again. We were learning in a different way, but we were learning. So, so we can say that schools were not closed for a semester, because we were only closed for about three weeks, I think, until the end of spring break. So, so there's some definition there that, as Mrs. Cook said, that we talked about. And so then, I'm confused in the, in the last sentence where it says nothing in this policy shall prevent the superintendent from seeking the most or least restrictive plans for reopening the schools, but previous we say that it has to be approved reopening plan. So that would seem to be, if we have to approve it, that that's restrictive, but if she doesn't have to, doesn't have to follow our most or least restrictive plan, she can do whatever she wants to anyway. I'm just a little confused as to how those, how that sentence fits in with the, with the rest of it, so. And I think marking period is kind of an arbitrary timeline. I mean, if we want to open up schools halfway through the marking period, we should open up schools halfway through the marking period and not have to wait. What I, what I don't want to do is I don't want to restrict the superintendent and have her thinking, well, should I do this in accordance with the board or should I not? I would like for the superintendent to be thinking about the safety and welfare of students and not have to worry about the board. That being said, we're each one-seventh of her boss, and so I'm, I'm certain that when she's, as she's going through this, that she will, or he, will confer with the board to make sure that, that they get the thoughts of the, thoughts of the board, you know, just because of the, of the whole org chart piece, that they're going to, you know, they're going to look and see what, does the board agree or does it not agree? But the superintendent takes an awful lot of heat, and that's why we, that's why they sit in the big chair in the big office, right? So they can take the big heat, so. I just, I just, and I also agree that we should send this to the policy committee, we should get legal input, and the legal input should be, is it in the school board's swim lane to do this? I mean, we know, we, we all read, every school system and seemingly everywhere voted for it. Some of them, I think, were probably requested by their superintendents because they didn't necessarily want to sit in the big chair and have the big office, I don't know, but-
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, can I comment on that?
Sure.
I know a number of the school districts, as part of their operating, their operating system is the, the school board does, does, does approve, does that kind of a change.
Well, I mean, it's got to just be written by policy.
We just, it doesn't happen to be, it's not part of our, it's not part of our policy, that's-
I don't know if it's part of their policy either, they just decided they needed to do it, I don't know. So, same way, you know, when-
Can I?
They closed by, closed for snow, they don't, people say, why did you close for snow? I didn't close the school, the superintendent did, so. So anyway, I just like, I, I would like to see it go back to the, to the policy committee and get, and get a legal opinion, and, and I, and I know the, you know, you've put a lot of thought into this and a lot of great work, and I appreciate that, and just kind of get, you know, and I would also like to see what other school systems do, and, and, you know, the VSBA policy is pretty clear, but, you know, I don't know if the VSBA policy considers what we've just been through, so. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I think I understand that last sentence, Mr. Kelly. Nothing in this policy shall prevent the superintendent from seeking the most or least restrictive plan. Seeking, I think, is the operative word. That doesn't mean-
Kidding.
In other words, it has to be approved, correct?
That's right.
Is that, is that what that means?
That's right.
That's what I thought.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Young, did you have one more?
Yes, I just had two questions. First of all, I do believe part of the role of the, the school board is oversight. I'm reminded of that frequently by people. The second thing is on, on the VSBA policy E B C D, the very last line says the guidelines may be reviewed by the school board. That line was not included in our policy. And can you explain why? Because, I mean, I was kind of, when I was reading this, I kept getting this feeling something was missing, but that line is not included.
I didn't notice that before.
Yeah, it's, it's the very last line on E B C D.
I think that's referring to something- My recollection is that because it was mushy, the guidelines may be reviewed by the school board, so they will or they won't, so it was just, I think, the, I mean, Serza might remember, but I think we took it out because it was kind of squishy.
That's an official term.
Gumby, it was like Gumby.
Dr. Beers, maybe do-
Yeah, Lisa, one more, one more way to sort of muddy the water. If you go, if you look at the VSBA, that first line, the superintendent or superintendent's designee may order. That order may come about as a result of the vote of a school board. It's not in there. In other words, may order, does that mean that if the superintendent orders the closing, you know, I him or herself, that that actually is what happens? So, even there, you know, I think there's some ambiguity. That's all, that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, Ms. Cook.
Yeah, and, and not to belabor it, but I, one thing that I would like to just say for the policy committee's benefit is that I'm really reticent, as, I, I agree 100% with Mrs. Young that our, our job is oversight and, and hiring and supervising the superintendent is part of that oversight in addition to budget and policy oversight. But I'm really hesitant to get out of, not only, as Mr. Kelly says, our swim lane, but also our area of expertise. I am not a public health expert, and I don't want to play one on TV, and, and so whether it's weather or related to war or, you know, the electric grid or polar reversal of the earth, whatever, I don't, you know, that's not my expertise. And I don't think we should be making decisions that we're, we're not experts. And regardless of the topic of a closing of school, we rely on Dr. Heron to be the educational leader of our community and to confer with other experts in whatever topic of the issue of the day is, whether it's weather or act of war, whatever. And so I don't, I don't think we should be taking action on a, on a pandemic, I just don't, because we're not experts in that field.
I, I would agree with you, and then I just want to reiterate one more thing, just to make it clear for the listening public. Our, our, our board did decide to follow our policy, which was to allow our superintendent to make the decision to reopen schools in the modality that's, that's fitting with the pandemic. And so I don't want the community to think that a decision was made that we were supposed to make. I just want to just clear the air to, to make it clear that our superintendent made the decision, we followed our existing policy, and we all, we publicly supported our superintendent, and, and folks had an opportunity to say what their druthers were, but, but we did support our superintendent in her decision by following our policy. So I don't want anyone in the public to think that we shirked our responsibilities and the decision was made and there was no way we could change it because we couldn't, it wasn't our decision, it was a superintendent's decision. I just want to put that out there and make that really clear.
So even when Mrs. Cook and I are uber-focused, we're not health policy experts, but I do appreciate the words in here that the board will seek an alternative reopening plan from the superintendent versus the board developing their own reopening plan as-
Yes.
Has been done, but, yeah, that's, that's all I really wanted to say about that. I mean, I, I think we, I think we did support the superintendent, so I think in her development of that plan, I think she communicated with each of us and kind of knew where we were and what our thoughts were and, and how we were going and in, in an appropriate, she communicated with us in an appropriate manner to make sure that, you know, we were still within the, the laws of, that that is, and so, you know, I think, I think we all were, had the opportunity to, to weigh in on that reopening plan individually, and I think that was all very appropriate, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kelly. So with that, we'll send it back to policy committee, and then you'll work with staff to get it to the attorney and review it, and then it'll come back to us. Okay, thanks, thanks, Mr. Dowell, for all your-
Thank you.
-work on that. So moving on to action items, we have three of those. Item 9.1, is there a motion to authorize the furlough of staff?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to furlough up to 50 classified employees during a period of predominantly virtual instruction during the 2020, 2021 school year, and report back to the board on the status of each furlough.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion?
Yeah, the, so this authorization, it still has to come through the personnel agenda at the school board.
Yes, sir.
So it's not just, you know, you don't have free rein to go do that without-
No, sir. The furloughed employees will be on the personnel agenda that's coming next.
Okay, I, I mean, I appreciate that, but do, do we have to put that in the motion that it should be brought forward to the, to the personnel agenda, or should it, is it fine the way it sits?
This was a recommendation of our attorney to, to word it this way, to make it more generic. I don't see a downside of saying to go through our normal process for appointing personnel or vice.
Does someone want to add that to the motion?
Trying to figure out where the most, the best place to add that to the motion would How about, how about after virtual instruction, following our, our usual personnel processes?
For me, does that work for everybody else? Ms. Young, you second it.
Can you just reread it with that inserted, please?
Oh, I wish I could. I don't know if I can do it all again. The school, the school board authorized the superintendent to furlough up to 50 classified employees during any period of predominantly virtual instruction following the usual personnel processes during the 2020, 2021 school year.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Okay, additional discussion? Ms. Cook?
I just want to make sure we're not hampering Dr. Heron's ability and authority here moving forward. I'm, you know, generally not a fan of furloughing. That said, is limiting it to 50, is qualifying with classified employee, I mean, so if something happens and something changes and we're in virtual instruction longer than we hope, or are we going to have to come back for another motion? I guess I'm fine with that, but I just would like to-
If, if the circumstances were to change dramatically, we would come back and you would make, we would put, go through the process again, because I think it's something that really merits public discussion, should we have to take more action of this kind.
So, to your point, do you just want to take the 50 out? Take the number out?
No, but yes, I mean, I don't want to-
I understand that, right.
I mean, no, I do not, but yes, I do.
You don't want to go more than 50, I get that, but I mean, is it just, is it just better just to do it without the number? And so since we're going through the usual process, it's not that-
Mr. Kelly, if that was the case, I'd recommend you take out classified as well then and just leave it to furlough employees during any period, and then it would go through our normal process.
And then we can pull that and discuss it as a-
Correct.
-item there, so.
I'm, I'm good with, I'm hoping Janet's following all this, but taking out furlough employees during any period of predominantly yada, yada, yada. I'm, I'm good with that.
Yada, 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 do you second?
No, I'm, I'm good with that. Can, can you reread it now without the, authorize the, Janet, do you have it?
Oh, boy. Authorize the superintendent to furlough employees during any period of predominantly virtual-
Instruction.
-instruction following our usual personnel processes-
During the 2020-
During the 2020, 2021 school year and report back to the board on the status of such furloughs.
Good.
He's very good.
So we've got a motion, a second, we've discussed additional discussion. Very none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 9.2, is there a motion to approve personnel actions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve personnel actions as presented.
Very second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Very none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
And item 9.3 is our motion to award RFP dash 20, 20 dash 14583 school bus safety video monitoring.
Madam Chair, I move that we award RFP number 20 dash 14583 school bus safety video monitoring to bus patrol.
Thank you. Ms. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The one problem I have always had with this RFP is that we have a warning period, a cooldown period-
I know.
-the notification of, I mean, it has been illegal to run a school bus stop sign-
Forever.
Since-
The dawn of time.
They were, they were, had horses pulling them. So, I mean, I just, I don't know why we would give them a warning period, God forbid we have a kid get hit during a warning period.
Mr. Lambasta said that he was going to tweak that, though. This is just authorizing to purchase the equipment.
I understand.
But I, I think-
I'm, I'm sure we can limit the, the warning period, Mr. Snipes, is that correct? We can reduce the warning period to a certain point?
No.
Mr. Kelly's concerned about the fact that we have too long a warning period when no one should be breaking, should be violating in this, in this way.
Possible that that is a part of the, the regulation or the law?
We will, we will look into it to determine if the 30-day period would fall or not.
We want it shorter, Mr. Snipes.
We want it shorter. We want it shorter.
We want, we'll look into it, it may be a regulation.
I want to tell them that, hey, we're going to, we're, we're going to start doing this, and on day one, I want a ticket going out, because I just, it's just, it's just visceral to me that you pass a school bus with a stop arm out- me that you pass a school bus with a stop arm out, and I just
Understand. And I think we agree with that as well. It shouldn't happen.
Yes, we do.
So we'll certainly look at the length of the period. I think the intent originally with the city and county was to give citizens fair warning of what they shouldn't be doing, but we get it, and we agree.
Just fair warning, don't pass a school bus with the arm out. I mean
I mean, isn't that on the driver's test?
Yes, it's on the driver's
Yes. I mean, so if you're driving, you should know that you don't pass school buses, period.
Why do you need a 30-day warning period?
I agree with you. I think just
I think we, I think we've got our marching orders. We, we, we get it, and we absolutely agree.
That is clear.
And we'll be glad to get these cameras on the buses.
I'm sure Ms. Serza will put it in SBQ, and we'll have that question answered for her.
Talked about it so much. Do we vote on it yet?
Nope, need to vote.
Okay. Do we have a second? Did someone second it?
Yeah, we seconded it.
Okay. We discussed it. There is no further discussion. I got lost in that discussion. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to board matters. I'll start with Mr. Dowell.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was curious, before I get into this other topic, that one caller that mentioned Chick-fil-A, was that my wife? Because when she came home with our kids, two laptops, and I guess we're going to get Josh's later, that's exactly what she said. She said that it was Chick-fil-A excellent, and it rivaled their logistics. She pulled up, and she saw three lines leading well out into the street, and she said, we're never going to get through this. I'm sending your dad. And before she knew it, they were done, and it was just very professional. And so congratulations to you, and to the whole team, Mr. Landers, and everybody that participated in that, because that is a big task. And, and so thank you. It really, it really was emblematic of the type of cooperation and collaboration among division educators and support staff that really care about our students, and they're looking forward to seeing these students coming back. So I just, it just really warmed my heart. We heard a lot from our students today, high schoolers, and those that are compassionate about social issues and racial equality, equity, I should say. And so we heard from Racial Equity Student Alliance, many students lending their voice to this issue that they see as problematic within the schools still. I just wanted to say a few things, but that's the kind of civic participation that we need, regardless of what you agree with or don't agree with. That's the kind of participation we need. Lending your voice to the issue at hand, being brave and willing to even stand up for someone else, a colleague or a peer, that says, this is what I've been experiencing, and being able to stand up for them. We heard some things that just, not good stuff, really troublesome. And to think that any student is having to deal with that, white or black, or Asian or Hispanic, Latino, Latina, anyone having to deal with being marginalized in any way is just disgusting. And so I, I thank our students for standing up and lending their voice to that today. I wonder, I, I wonder, maybe there's an answer in this room, because I'm new, how long the Racial Equity Student Alliance has been, has been functioning? Are they a part of our student advisory committee? You know, how far does their voice reach? Are there liaisons that they can be a part of to continue those dialogues in, you know, a, a more concerted, more robust forum? Those are some of my, my thoughts and the questions that I wrote down as I was listening to them, because what they had to share was important. Also, wonder about the diversity about, of that group. We heard from black students, we heard from white students. I would like to think that that group is inclusive of those other groups that I mentioned, you know, the Mexicans, Hispanics, Latinos, the Asian Americans, that it is fully diversified and emblematic of the community that we live in. So me personally, I'd be interested to, to get to know that group more, and to hear more from them. And perhaps, if they're listening, they can reach out to me, and they can share with me some of their issues and their, their concerns. They brought up several good opportunities to address these issues in the school system. Many I'm sure, perhaps, my colleagues here have already heard of, anonymous reporting of racism and bullying. On the face of it, that sounds fantastic. I'd like to hear more of that, and what that might look like within our school division, anonymous reporting. Strengthened consequences for racism. I think that goes without saying that it won't be tolerated, that there would be a zero tolerance for any cloud of racist actions, actions or provocations. And again, across the board, not just for black students or white students, but for all those other students that we care for and serve in, in this division. And there are a list of other decent ideas around creating a more inclusive environment in our schools. But again, for me, to, to hear from them, maybe even directly, or hearing about if they're a part of the student advisory committee council, you know, how we can be a part of these dialogues in a more robust fashion.
Ms. Dowell, if I could just clarify, I, from my understanding, the Racial Equity Student Alliance has most recently just formed in connection with the village. They're not actually a school organization. However, one of the, the steps moving forward that we feel is very necessary in each of our high schools is to form a student advocacy group at each high school, who then can bring some concerns directly to us as the school administration of each school, and really deal with a lot of things on the school level. But I did have an opportunity to listen to the students in a Zoom conference call. Six students represented the others, and they really spoke very well, and did an excellent job of, of giving examples of how they've been treated, and we're certainly planning to follow up with them as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Heron, Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dowell's mentioning of the student advisory committee reminded me, it's, it's that time of year, right, where we're seeking applicants for student advisory, and special education advisory, and 21st century career and readiness committees? So I, I hope that we're pushing that out through the division, but anyone who's listening, please do look on the website and consider volunteering your time. That way, it really does help the division be better. So I wanted to also thank the student speakers. It is, it does take time, and thought to call in, and it's a brave and wonderful thing to do, so I appreciate it. And those calls, in addition to the Title IX policy piece that we did today, not anytime soon, I know you've got a lot going on, but at some point, and then like, you know, next year, I think it would be good to just have a public review of the processes that, because there's multiple pathways to express concern about how things are working, right? So we've got, you know, hotlines, we've got, you know, you can, you report things to a teacher. So whether it's racism, or Title IX, or harassment, or the other kinds of harassment, or, or just bullying, if, if we could just get an overview of that, just so when we're asked by citizens what the various pathways are, whether they're anonymous, not anonymous, it'd just be helpful, because I know there's multiple. I know that the school division is always trying to forge new pathways for engagement, so. So the, with regard to sort of virtual learning today, was the high school open house, and I attended that, and it was great. And I was delighted to learn that, at least for now, the start time for high school is 8:00 AM. So thank you for that. That's a little more humane than
That was for you, Ms. Cook.
Thank you. I was Look at pandemic. Pandemic to get you your 8:00 AM Exactly, right? Took, yeah, okay. And then just also with, following up on the idea of online learning, just wanted to commend the school division for their, their session on Canvas. It was wonderful. I was one of the, almost 900 parents, I think, or family members who attended that. And also, I listened to the Williamsburg Regional Library Summit on, on remote learning, and that was excellent. So I just think there's a lot of good resources out there for families, and I hope you take a look at them. And then also, last week, Dr. Heron and I attended the PTA council meeting, the first one of the year, and PTAs are gearing up across the division. I encourage everyone to join at least one PTA. And one of the discussions that we had along the, along the lines of advocacy was, right now, there's a bill in the Senate that allows school divisions to get their per pupil allocation from the state based on attendance in March, as opposed to the 30-day count, which is a little typical. And because of the pandemic, the numbers are going to be a little bit, since I've used the word squishy tonight, I'll use that again today. And so it would be better for school divisions across the state to be able to rely on their attendance in, in March. So I would encourage, I encouraged all the PTA members to advocate for that, and I encourage all of you, and I also encourage the public to please call Senators Mason and Senator, Senators Mason and Norman, and ask them to support the idea of funding schools based on their enrollment from last March, because it will help us a lot.
That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Young?
Thank you. Yeah, first of all, I just went, wanted to ask Dr. Heron, when are teachers reporting back to school?
Teachers are already in professional learning for the last week, or more, actually, 10 days now, and they start, of course, on, on Tuesday.
Right. Well, I want to welcome teachers back, and other staff. It's going to be an unusual school year, as my neighbor said, that this is going to be the year nobody ever forgets in their entire life, which I totally agree. I also want to welcome Mr. Kiefer to, to work with Dr. Heron. I think she's very good at kidnapping people from Virginia Beach.
Coming willingly.
Oh, well, thank you for coming willingly. We appreciate that. I also just wanted to comment on what the Racial Equity Student Alliance, I, I applaud these young people for stepping forward and being interested in, in correcting wrongs. One of the things that I heard, I wrote down some things that stood out. I, I do believe that honor classes should be offered to all students. I mean, I'm thinking of my, my one daughter who dreaded the idea, but, but rose to the occasion when she was in a class. And I think sometimes that's what happens to students. They're, they've given the challenge, they, they're able to, to raise their own goals and aspirations. I find it abhorrent that there would be any belittlement by verbal, nonverbal, of any minority or other student in our division. I, I know that our bullying policy is pretty specific, but sometimes it's the nonverbal things that are, that are worse. The rolling of the eyes, the shrugging of the shoulders, the casual bump in the hallway. We need to, I mean, that, to me, that's part of growing up, is learning to respect each other. And one of the things I always loved about Martin Luther King is his focus on the individual. And, and I hope that will certainly be a part of their continued study. I, I look forward to the day that there'll be no act of discrimination in our society. And I think that's, that's a goal that all of us would like to see. Just want to thank again, I don't know if we can ever thank staff enough for all that they've done this summer, and for their continued working for our students and our families. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, first of all, once again, I, I want to commend the superintendent and staff for literally keeping us right up to date, right up to this morning, in terms of what we're doing in our schools, how we're dealing with employees. It's, I know, I, I just can't, I can imagine how many hours that took doing that. And I just can't help but say it again. I, too, applaud the students from the Racial Equality Student Alliance. One thing that struck me is, and often we can, we may forget this, but I think it's still really true, there are examples of how change is often achieved when raised from the ground level up, rather than from, on high. That very often, students have been the ones that stir the conscience, get people to talk, get people to act. And I, I am just, I just think it's a real tribute to our, to our community, to our, to our schools, when you have students like that, because they're not going to stop. They're not going to, they're, they're going to, they're going to keep going, and I, I very much support that. One last thing I'd like to say, and I know much has been said about Lois Hornsby. My wife and I have, I've, I've knew Lois, I almost said no, knew Lois for, oh, golly, 35 years. And I, and what I, what I would say that always, was always impressed me, Lois was a quiet mover and shaker to make our schools better. She did not shout. She did not march. She didn't repeat a phrase loudly over and over and over again. But she worked quietly to encourage change in our schools, in our community. She helped found altogether Literacy for Life, which, Literacy for Life, I was a board member for a number of years, came into existence to help undereducated adults, and really turned into a, a center for learning for minorities, African American, Latino. And so she leaves a lasting, really a lasting imprint. And I was fortunate enough to have her as a friend, and she will be missed.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Kelly?
So, Mrs. Young, nobody's going to forget this year, but I really think I'm going to try. So the kids that enter senior year next year, we're halfway through first grade when I came to the school board. And this is my 11th first day of school, and the speech that I used the previous 10 is no longer relevant. It's, it's, this is a first day like no other. The teacher prep and, and getting ready for this coming school year, let me assure everybody that this is not easier than in-person instruction. Those teachers are, are working so hard, and I am so grateful for them, and thankful for the work that they're doing. It's just, you just can't believe how much work it is for our teachers. In order for them to get there, our staff and, and administration working through the summer is just, has just done outstanding work, and everything to distribution of the technology, to development of curriculum. I, I'm just very appreciative for, for what staff and administration has done. And so, you know, we, with the virtual learning, the first nine weeks, the pressure on families and the pressure on students to adjust to the new paradigm is, is unbelievable. And, and I know that, I know we can get through it. I know we can, we can do good work. I know we can do, have great learning, and, and I appreciate all the effort that our community will put, put into to support this virtual, virtual learning. As we start the school year, we have no idea where we're going to end up at the end of the year. We hope it's graduations in person. I think Kaplan Arena is going to be under renovations, so it won't be at Kaplan if we have it. But I really, I'm really looking forward to a graduation with marching in and pomp and circumstance, and all of those things that are associated with, with the graduation weekends. I'm looking forward to students getting on the bus for the last day of school year and going home, and I really hope that's where we are. But we have a journey and a path in front of us.
But we have a journey and a path in front of us. We're going to have to adapt. We're going to have to be flexible. We're going to have to be patient. There's, there's a lot to come through this school year and I just want to, I appreciate everybody in the community and the fam, and the families and the faculty and the, and the teachers and the staff and, and all the support staff for the work that they're going to have to do this year as we, as we adjust and work through it. So I'm just, I'm just, I just admire all the, all the folks that are, that are working to put, put learning together. I just appreciate it so much. So I'm looking forward to, looking forward to somehow getting back to normal by the end of the year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
I'm going to just echo everything that Jim Kelly just said, so I won't say it all again. I will just say I agree with him with all of his appreciation for the staff and the parents and just everyone with their flexibility and adaptability for dealing with this. I also wanted to just add a, a special thanks, not only to the students who spoke tonight, but for their mentors. I, I think all of us know the two women towards the end who come to a lot of our school board meetings. I think they have mentored these students in the role of being civic activists and, and how to civically engage and, and move policies forward and move, and, and make change happen in communities and, and in a way that is positive and, and meaningful. So I just wanted to thank the mentors in people's lives that create these opportunities. Because once someone feels comfortable enough to write that one minute comment, to actually have to get it down on a piece of paper, rehearse it, say it, speak and record themselves, it, it is, it's not comfortable, but once you do it, you feel more comfortable doing it and you feel like, I can do this again. And the next time something comes that you, you feel like, I, I have a voice and I want to, I want to share my opinion, you're, you're not reticent about that and you, and you know where you need to go to speak and how you want to, how you want to present your ideas in a, in a really positive manner. So I just wanted to thank the mentors in everyone's lives. I wanted to say a few words about Lois Hornsby. I've known Lois since before my sister married her son. So it's been probably forty years that, that we've known the Hornsby's. And Lois was just an incredibly positive person. In my mind, one of my memories is when my daughter was, was in the musical Grease and she had to go and find a lot of nineteen fifties outfits. And Lois said, come over into my attic and let's just go up in the attic and I will find you all sorts of nineteen fifties clothes, not only for you, but for everyone in the whole cast. And so Lois was just a huge supporter of the arts. She was a huge supporter of building bridges between all of the different groups in the Williamsburg area and just, once again, just a really positive person. And I wanted to thank the students of Hornsby Middle School for all of those notes that they made for Lois last year. She, they kept those notes in a basket by Lois's bed. And whenever her sons would go over, they would take a free moment and dig into the pile of notes and read their mother some of those kind, kind, meaningful notes from the students. And it, it meant, it meant a lot to her. So I just
Thank you, Julie. I agree, as usual, with everything my colleagues have said tonight and wanted to definitely agree with mentors. I had an opportunity to attend a village Zoom meeting, I guess, last week. And the general assembly has resolved that the village will receive a resolution for their advocacy efforts. And it was noted in, in the Zoom meeting that I attended, it was a very diverse group, very broad, and I think they definitely are mentoring our students and are, are making an impact in our community. So I'm, I'm grateful for that. As a parent, just wanted to say kudos to our staff. I too, like Ms. Cook and Mr. Dowell, got my boys' laptop, laptops in and out pretty quickly. And we were able to participate in our online ninth grade orientation and open house. And we truly have a lot of heroes in our division. And staff have worked tirelessly all summer long to create curriculum and tools to support student learning and engagement. And I know that, you know, one of the things that's exciting about fall are making those connections with teachers and students and building those relationships. And, and that's still going to happen. It's going to happen differently. And I know our staff will go above and beyond, our teachers, our administrators, all staff, to help students get connected, engaged and, and learn. And so we're going to be doing it differently. It will require patience, but we will, we will definitely get through this. And then Ms. Cook made me think about the committee. So at some point, Dr. Heron, can you update us on how committees will be meeting this year, our various school board committees?
Yes, we will do that at the next meeting. I think Ms. Cerza will be sending out information about committees.
Thank you. So with that, we move on to our upcoming events. Policy committee is meeting on September twenty-fourth at eight AM in central office in room one oh eight. Upcoming meeting, we have closed session starting at six here in the annex on September fifteenth, followed by a regular meeting at six thirty. And the next meeting will be October sixth, six PM closed session here in central office, followed by a regular meeting at six thirty. And I didn't ask, are there additional agenda items that are coming forward, just to put on the radar for our next meeting? Ask ahead of time. Luminary. So we have the, the end of year spending plan. And with that, unless there are additional questions, comments, talk about long policies? This meeting is adjourned.